Well, now I'll call to order the October thirteenth, twenty twenty five, City of Abilene, Kansas City.
Whit.
Present.
Mr. Coloff.
Here.
Mr. Meisenberg.
Here.
Mr. Miller's absent. Roll call complete.
Okay. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the religion of which stands one day. But God in the midst of all, when we're supposed to be no after the first call.
Our first item is approval of today's agenda with an amendment.
Do you need a detail on the amendment?
Yeah, I guess I can make the motion if that's easier. I've got it written here. So I would move to approve today's agenda with the addition of item eight B, extra territorial sewer connections.
My second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Whit.
Yes.
Commissioner Coloff.
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is the consent agenda, which consists of the meeting minutes for the September twenty second, twenty twenty five regular meeting, appropriation ordinance A dash one zero one three two five and AP payment register one zero one three two five.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Coloff.
Uh, hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Whit.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is under heading six, public comments communications, six A, a public forum. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to? We all know who you are and where you live, but if you could state your name and address for the record.
That's kind of scary.
I've been around long enough.
Yeah, Hank Royer, uh, Abil, three oh nine North Line here in Abilene. I'm here just kind of for an update or asking for an update. You're all aware of it, but back in May, the Union Pacific Railroad re-rubberized their Buckeye Crossing there south of Second Street. And they did so ostensibly because they were having water problems with their signaling when it rained, their signals wouldn't work. So they came another ten feet further than they did before when they first did it first time to come clear over to their signal box. And since then, uh, we had a drought for a while. Some people may have noticed, but we've had some rain a couple of times. And when it rains over about three quarters of an inch, it floods downtown. All of the downtown basically drains to the south there. Goes down under those tracks through the drain pipe. Well, the drain pipe is the city manager was able to get a good picture of. And you all had it in your agenda, but if I could approach, I'd just give you a copy of. In our dialogue, and John's been really good about talking about it, the city acknowledges that that drain pipe is plugged. This is, I think, the good end of it, not the bad end. But it's a, that's your drain pipe going under the tracks. And all that rock looks like ballast to me. I'm not an engineer, but it looks like ballast that's in there. So every time it rains, it floods. Back there, about three pages, I have a picture of one of the rains where we had an inch and a half. It's sunny in that picture, but you can see it's an hour after it and still flooded in the U P lot out in the Buckeye and up into Second Street. And if we have over a two inch rain, I'm afraid it's going to flood all our basements, including yours, John, and my buildings. All those buildings are going to flood down there because this rock is blocking the, uh, drain tube. I mean, that's come winter, I'm afraid we get ice and snow and it freezes. If we don't have this cleaned out of there by then, you're going to have a skating rink out of half of Buckeye because it goes out into Buckeye. Cars can be hydroplaning and skidding on the ice, whatever. At any rate, it's a real problem and John has done a good job. I've got our dialogue in there, my letter to him and his back to me. The city acknowledges it's a problem. I do think it's inappropriate to say that, uh, you're aware of the problem of this location as well as the number of other sites. Uh, this problem didn't exist until May. It isn't like private property in North Abilene that the owners are fussing and got flood problems. This is and it didn't exist until this project. Now, I know people pay the railroad's hard to deal with, but I'm here to ask you, what is the timeline? When are we going to get something done on this? It's been two months since the problem manifested itself with a decent rain. Are we, to my knowledge, nothing's been done except identifying the problem in the last two months. So I'm here to ask you to acknowledge, well, the problem has been acknowledged. There's no issue there. I'm asking you to do something about the problem before you have a real problem in downtown Abilene. And I, I acknowledge that John talks about the twenty twenty six project to work for the storm grates north of there. Well, that's great. Put more water down there. If you don't plug, clean that out, that'll be a bigger problem. I'm, I'm asking you not wait till twenty twenty six when you might be able to do something else somewhere else. Address this, address it now, please. So that's my comment.
Senator Quinday, I know we last received an update that you were waiting on some representatives from the railroad to be onsite when it's being completed. Do you have, I guess you have any further update on that?
Yeah, we spoke with an engineer about some of the plans on dragging the rock through there. And as the email says and the other communications, we looked at different options such as jack boring and one of the options was to run a cable through the drainage pipe, try to snake it through the rocks, connect a metal disc on the other side and use a front end or loader or backhoe to drag it through. Uh, but talking through that with the engineer, if we do any of that, it could upset or change the elevation of the railroad tracks. Um, you know, if it collapses further or changes that. So Brad got with the railroad to make sure that we have somebody on site uh, when that work is done, so they can observe it. And make sure that anything we're doing, if there's disturbance to the railroad that they're aware that we don't have an unknown disturbance and something happened to a train passing through town. We, the, uh, reference to all the other drainage issues in town, as the commission's aware, we talked about rather than addressing hotspots to do a comprehensive list of everything that is a drainage area and then prioritize them by the current policy, which Brad, Joe and I are working on. Uh, one of the things that we identified and the commission's aware of and Brad and Joe have been aware of is the south drainage study that takes the water from the south part of town and does a couple of dog legs and drums it into a tributary. I think five years ago, the city had a study done saying that that's a major cause of the flooding down there. I'm not saying that this pipe, this pipe and the rock in it's causing that issue, but the larger issue is that south drainage. Uh, two thousand five years ago, two thousand twenty, the, uh, the engineer said, here's your issue. Here's what's going to take to fix it. Here's three options. And in my knowledge, nothing's been done since. The price tags range from, uh, I believe fifteen to twenty million dollars. Uh, that admittedly had a thirty percent contingency, which I'm not a fan of. Tell me what it's going to cost. So we're currently looking for funding for that, but as it relates specifically to the, um, railroad, we have, get somebody on site, get a cable snake through there, a, uh, a disc that matches the diameter and try to pull that rock out and see. Our hope is we can pull that rock out and, uh, the corrugated steel does not collapse any further, causing significant issues. So.
What, why are we fixing what seems to be the railroad's problem? I mean, the, a problem that the railroad caused?
I don't know that the road caused it. I have nothing other than people saying, I think they did the work and it started happening there, but for me to tell the railroad, you have to fix it would be like me telling my daughters that they can't date before they're thirty.
I'm trying that too.
That's pretty difficult. You know, even if I had an engineer or somebody that said, I know that caused it. Getting the railroad to come in and fix it's not as simple as saying, come fix it. So, uh, yes, we're working on the issue, but we want to make sure it's in coordination with the railroad so we don't damage the tracks.
I mean.
Well, it was three weeks ago the railroad was here because I was called when they were here talking to Brad. And did you come up with a solution, Brad?
We kind of had another little bit of update. Part of the solution is, um, they're not sure what is going on. One comment that was made to me by the engineer was, um, we technically don't have the authority to be working in the railroad right away. They're supposed to be getting back with me and I know this is a long winded story, but this was the second update. They actually said um, they may be looking at closing that lane and tearing that, that, uh, what would be the very west lane of the southbound up and seeing what is going on, um, because we won't. What is unclear on the engineer's statement is whether or not, um, the railroad would take full responsibility of repairs, therefore the money, or whether the city would be any, um, responsible for any. That's the unclear part. I'm waiting to hear back from them again. Um, but yes, that railroad engineer did meet me on site just to know. So we told him of our plan of possibly, um, trying to run a cable and doing everything that we could do. Um, he was really not in favor of that really until he got back with us. Um, so we are kind of at a standstill and I will make contact with them again. Um, but, uh, yeah, kind of that's where we're at with this whole situation.
It's kind of hard to tell from this picture, but it appears that it is all railroad ballast. Is that accurate?
That kind of like railroad, railroad ballast. Uh, what we don't know if the, if the corrugated metal pipe doesn't truly crush, um, flat, it kind of crushes in a, in a V in a hard shape, um, when it, when you, uh, when you damage it. So rather or not, we get anything pulled through there or not, which is why the engineer has seen these same exact pictures. And, uh, this is south of the drainage inlet there at the civic center parking lot, um, is where it is. So
How far?
We believe that the, um, the damage from the inlet box is right about the first set of tracks in there. So you can see an indention, uh, not an indention, a settlement in the brand new pavement that they laid when they put the tracks in. So because of that, that's actually working to our benefit because he can, he can see that something is going on and moving underneath.
It's kind of hard to tell from this picture, but how far is that rock? Does that extend from like where? Or kind of shows us here in the picture, is that twenty feet, fifty feet? What's the?
Uh, from the camera inlet where we dropped the camera in, I'm guessing it's twenty to twenty-five feet um, going south. So this would be the north set of the tracks, the north railroad tracks closest to the civic center lot. And yes, uh, he, we, he does acknowledge or he knows that, um, we did not have any problems prior to this project taking place. So that's the one plus thing we have going for us. If they're going to be involved a hundred percent with total, total cost.
When you last spoke with him, did he give you any sort of timeline on when he'd get back?
He did not. He was going to, uh, double check with someone even higher up than him in the, in the, um, chain world. And this was a gentleman that, um, happened to be on one of their railroad tour inspections that, um, got on the road, the rail at Kansas City. Came all the way to Salina and then they were coming back through and they stopped in Metis and so.
Is that, I'm kind of eyeballing it here, but is that twenty-five feet essentially the length of the railway? Like kind of where the tracks are, not considering the whole?
Would be from the, um, approximately the drainage inlet, um, there at the civic center lot going south um, to the first set of tracks.
And is that inlet on the southeast corner there? I mean, is it?
Uh, yes.
Just a few feet from the tracks. Okay. So I mean, but then I guess what I'm asking is the rock is essentially sitting directly underneath the tracks.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
In my opinion, that's where the rock had to come from too. It's ballast, uh, railroad rock. There's no other area the, the rock would have came from in that location. So to see it in the pipe, what's, what I can't tell is whether or not there's, this is a banded section between the con, the concrete pipe and the corrugated pipe that you see. Here's my opinion is if we do, if they do open it up, because we won't be able to open it up. But if they do open it up and we see corrugated pipe underneath, it's within our best interests. Rather we upgrade it and, and replace all the corrugated metal out while it's there and update it with a concrete pipe. I mean, corrugated pipe, the acidity levels in, uh, in Dixie County soil just eventually are going to lead to a rusted out problem. And I'm honestly surprised we haven't had more since then.
Is it our responsibility to repair those under railroad right away?
Well, technically, no, it is not. But, uh, the, the question is whether or not an upgrade, like if they want to put corrugated pipe right back in it, I don't know what. Rather or not, we'd have the right to tell them not to do that.
I mean, we've, what are, we've certainly got codes. If our code says if you have a
Yeah, but I don't know. Apply to railroad and I would honestly say they're going to tell you they don't.
I'd have to defer to Aaron, but I believe that railroad property is not considered part of the city limits.
I think that's accurate. I do know they're, they have special benefits un- under the law and have certain immunities from local codes. I'd have to look further to know exactly how that hierarchy would apply in this context.
Yeah, I mean, um, just speaking from past experience dealing with railroad in north central Kansas quite a bit, I just, it, it's been a battle. I mean, and it's always going to be a battle. They've always considered any state highway fortunate to cross their railroad tack tracks. And that's just the way they look at things and um, it is what it is. But, uh, the acknowledgement of the water, um, yes, we know that there's a problem there. Fortunately, with a little bit of time, it does drain on out. That does mean we have water getting through. It's just not getting through at the capacity that, um, it does at full flow. It's not a big pipe down there to start with.
What is the diameter there?
I think it's only fifteen, which is not very big, but the whole downtown area was laid in back in the day pretty flat and not very deep underneath that Buckeye, Buckeye area. That's, that's our update. I will make contact with them again and see if they've gotten any, anything further from the engineer I spoke with.
Yeah, that'd be helpful just to let us know what you heard back from them and that way we can keep on them because it'd be nice to get it figured out before it gets any colder and they can't.
No, agree.
Thank you all. Thank you, Brad. Yep, sure.
Uh, before you move on to the next one, I do want to speak to the appropriateness of, uh, prioritizing that drainage along with other areas. There are numerous areas within the city, uh, that are city right away or city infrastructure that cause drainage. Uh, one good example is Fifth and Campbell, which has been ongoing for a long time. Uh, where I've heard stories, I haven't lived here that long, where when it rains, people can take boats down there and have. So, uh, this is not the only infrastructure related, uh, drainage issue we have. I'd say, look, speaking with Brad and Joe, you probably have at least two dozen, uh, in town that are just city infrastructure related.
I, I did watch cars and trucks both hydroplaning in the morning was the second time in Florida. Brad was down there early and he saw it too. But it does go out clear into one lane of Buckeye even with a small rain and half of Second Street. And you get traffic coming through town, you're going to have liability issues. One of those cars go sliding off there and crashing into the railroad or something down there.
Mr. Royer, Mr. Royer, I think you said you have some familiarity with railroads and how uh, the law might apply there. Do you? Did I, am I remembering someone else's story of fighting the railroad?
My dear, he has also worked with the railroad. I know they're obnoxious to deal with. But I used to know the president of the Union Pacific Railroad. That's how we got our depot down here. He got a lease for us for the depot rather than tearing it down, but he's retired. So president of the U P, I don't know anymore.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we, do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into heading seven business items. First up is seven A, public hearing regarding improvements to the water treatment plant supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA system to be funded under the low interest state revolving loan program through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. And I will now open that public hearing. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak during the public hearing on the, um, SCADA upgrade? Loan application through K D H E. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. We will move into item seven B, consider approval of resolution number one zero one three, three, two, five, a resolution authorizing the completion of an application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, K D H E, regarding a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, Public Works Director Anderson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Brad Anderson, Public Works Director. Uh, yes, we're just looking to adopt the resolution that approves the authorization um, to complete and submit this S R F loan. We will also, um, do our best in this timeframe to continue to look for uh, any other grant money that's available out there, just so you know that. But, um, this is basically the authorization to go ahead and proceed.
And just for clarification, just proceeding with the application.
Mm-hmm. That's correct. Yeah, we would then have to be officially approved um, for the application. It would then come back to us. From there, um, the whole process would begin where we'd go through a bid process, um, or the, the SCADA replacement, just, just like anything else normal. So this is just kind of like step one and seeing if we progress any further.
Do we have any questions for city staff on this item?
So just so I'm clear, we are making an application. We're not accepting any terms or anything like that. I, I do feel, uh, Brad, I'm glad to hear that you're going to continue working towards that, but I do feel like we should look at some other avenues for funding as well. So. Uh, I am voting, I will vote for this. I'm not certain, I guess, that I would vote for the loan for the full amount.
Do we have any other questions? Comments for city staff?
With that, um, in our packet, um, and then it get printed, is it a debt, this one ends in dash one, this resolution, is that right? Okay. So, uh, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one zero one three two five dash one.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Whit.
Yes.
Commissioner Coloff.
Hi.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven C, public hearing regarding improvements to the wastewater treatment plant supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA system funded under the low interest state revolving loan program to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. And I will now open that public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing. And we will move to item seven D, consider approval of resolution one zero one three two five dash two, a resolution author- authorizing filing of application with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, K D H E, for a loan under the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund Act, K S A nineteen eighty-eight S supplemental six five dash three, three, two, one through six, five, dash, three, three, two, nine. Public Works Director Anderson.
Commissioners, this will be, uh, basically the exact same example as we just got done with. Um, looking to adopt the resolution to go ahead and, and, uh, complete and submit the S R F paper loan paperwork. Um, same principle of, uh, if we get accepted, we will then move forward with, uh, bidding phase and basically everything exactly the same again.
Any questions for staff on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution one zero one three two five dash two.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion?
Same feedback on this as before.
Any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Whit.
Yes.
Commissioner Coloff.
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven E, consider approval of supplemental agreement number one with the Secretary of Transportation, Kansas Department of Transportation for the grand amendment for the Abilene Municipal Airport Hangar Replacement. Finance Director Brian.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is supplemental agreement number one with K dot updating to cover preliminary engineering for the new hangars. Uh, Brian with Olson is here. If you have any additional questions, this is follow up from last meeting.
Have any questions for city staff or Brian?
Make a motion to approve supplemental agreement number one with the Secretary of Transportation, Kansas Department of Transportation for the grand amendment for the Abilene Municipal Airport Hangar Replacement Project.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion?
I noticed there's some, uh, airport related people here. I didn't know if there's any public comment that you wanted to take on that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess Jim, do you have anything to add from last meeting? And with Brian being here, do you have anything that you want to add or highlight or? Have any further questions for staff? Just do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Commissioner Coloff.
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Whit.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven F, consider approval of master agreement for professional services, work order number eight, amendment number one with Olson for the Abilene Municipal Airport Design and Construction. Finance Director Brian.
Again, we talked about this at the last study session. This amendment to work order number eight reflects the changes to the scope of services to bed a six place T hangar as the base bid with an eight place T hangar included as alternate bid number one.
I'm going to jump in here. I don't think, um, and I guess Jim, I would like your feedback on this. I don't see any reason to bid a six place hangar if we had ten of them blow down and we know that we're going to need more than six. So, um, I guess that's my, my feedback on this.
From previous discussions, six was, uh, I believe the number because of funding limitations. And then if we're able to, uh, get additional federal funding and find some other money, then go for, uh, eight.
Have any further questions for staff? On this item?
I'll make a motion to approve master agreement for professional services, work order number eight, amendment number one with Olson for the Abilene Municipal Airport Design and Construction of the T hangars.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? I'll say, I don't disagree. I think that we need to build eight out there if at all possible, but I don't. I think it's nice to have options at least because I think even if we did a funding didn't come out how we expected it to, we could still afford to do the six hangar and then add on if we were able to procure additional grant funding. So. Have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we do a roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff.
Nay.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item under heading eight items for discussion is eight A, city manager recruitment process and timeline interim city manager Quinde.
About a month ago, I sent a email to the city commission outlining a process and potential timeline for recruiting a city manager. I know it's the commission's intent to like to see who's passes the general election and involve those folks in making that decision. But as time is giving in short, like six meetings left that I have, I didn't know if there's anything that you need city staff to do to initiate that process or how you want to handle it.
I guess my assumption is that we would send that a RFQ to a couple of search firms to get that process started.
I, help me out if I'm remembering this incorrectly, but I thought we'd already agreed to use the league for that process.
I don't think we did. No.
I don't think we took official action on that.
Yeah, I know we kind of leaned on them to find John, but.
And you've done a great job.
You have.
I've, I've heard good things from everyone about you, so.
You've only talked to two people. Would you like us to develop a request for qualifications and bring it back? Uh, send it out between now and the twenty seventh. Send it to you, make sure it captures what you want and then send it out.
And I, I'm trying to remember the last time we did this. I don't know if we sent an RFQ or an RFP with pricing to.
Uh, generally the short timeframe you have, I'd recommend a question proposals.
Yeah.
That way you know what they're going to provide and what it's going to cost.
So I think there is a, I think last time there was a pretty wide range of pricing.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Between the different firms that prepare those searches, so.
Yeah, I'd say go ahead and sending out the RFP and then the next thing coming before the commission would be our, our review of those responses.
Probably the first meeting in November, just to give enough time for them to respond.
I think probably simultaneously, we need to be developing requirements for applicants. Do you agree with that?
Uh, a profile of what you'd like to see from the applicants.
Yeah.
Yeah. Probably updating your community profile and the strengths and opportunities for the city as a whole, and then what the city commission would like as far as qualifications for the candidates. Whether that education, experience, specific skills.
I think that's typically handled in the profile after we have selected a firm from the RFP.
Correct.
I think with our timeframe that we need to be working on those simultaneously. I'm just, my feelings, I think if we've got Mr. Quinde for six more meetings and I, I don't see any reason to Donald.
I can bring up the old media profile and what was used for candidate qualifications before, send that out to the commission and then add a work study. I can't remember the, what's the meeting in November? The first one? The tenth? Then possibly bring that back to the November tenth work study. By then you'll know who's passed through the general election and you might want to receive their input as far as what those community profile and candidate qualifications entail. If you do that during a work study, basically an open conversation.
Sure. Think that out that we can, are there any changes from the last one? Jayla, add, add that to your list.
When you say updating the city's profile, can you explain what you mean?
Uh, the profile of the city as far as the industry, the education, housing, uh, what the city commission believes that the city's strengths and opportunities are. Which over the last five years, some of those have changed. You've had some pretty good housing growth, but you have some issues that have been identified in the past five years. So knowing what, as a candidate, I'd want to know what the city commissions thinks that the community strengths are, what the organizational strengths are, but where there's opportunities within the community, economic development or infrastructure, and then opportunities within the organization as far as staffing and how things are done. And if you have particular skill set that you're looking for, you'll see some that strength is finances or economic development. It can be more than one. It's just whatever you think's important. Because that's what the candidate's going to look at is what are they looking for? And do I meet that? Because most candidates are going to have the basic training and experience. It's what are you looking for? And do they fit into that, that niche?
Do we have any further discussion on that item? Have we given you clear enough?
Yes, sir.
Direction?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that we will move into item eight B, extraterritorial sewer connections interim city manager Quinde.
Yeah, it's, we've been doing for the last couple of months. We've been reviewing internal operations and how we do things, looking for efficiencies or ways that we can improve customer service. And today we were discussing the process of new water and sewer connections, both inside and outside the city. And during that discussion, we reviewed the city code. There's a section of city code that requires that any before the city can connect somebody that lives outside the city with the sanitary sewer system of the city, it requires the governing body's approval. You get very few applications from people who connect to the city sewer that live outside for two, maybe three reasons. The, the cost, it's a fifteen hundred dollar fee just to connect. And then their charges per month are twice what it is for if you live inside the city. So it might be a question of economics, the cheaper to build a oh, the one that goes in the ground. I can't think of the name real quick or connecting to it. Now, in nineteen ninety-two, the city did make agreements with several property owners outside the city limits in exchange for utility easements to lay the city's, part of the city sewer system. The easement says that those folks can and have permission to connect to the city sewer system and that extraterritorial fee is waived. So those are the types of connections that you've seen since nineteen ninety-two. This is a unique one, but during that discussion, we have a property and that person is here now at nineteen thirteen West First Street that has been reached out to city staff and wants to connect to the city sanitary sewer line which runs through his neighbor's yard. That person is only gone, talked with city staff who said, we have no issues with it. Contracted with the plumber and the excavation that to happen and has an utility easement already on file with their property owner. And then I put the brakes on it today saying, well, wait, city code says we have to have the governing body's approval. Normally I would wait and bring this to you on a work study and then come back in two weeks. But the, this family's gone through the steps. They were told it was okay. And they've got those people, those contractors scheduled to come on the twenty eighth of October. Your next meeting is on the twenty seventh, but even if we waited until the twenty seventh for the commission to say yes or no, it wouldn't be practical to keep that October twenty eighth schedule in place because in the off chance that the commission would say no, then you've got contractors who've scheduled a whole day to be at your property. So what the commission has in front of you is a quickly put together application because there wasn't one for sewer tap outside the city limits and it has the property owner's information. And Mr. Height is here today. If you have any questions, talks about who his contractor is, the sewer depth, uh, the date that the work is scheduled to happen. It's a non-hard surface because it's in the neighbor's yard. The tap depth is ten foot to fourteen feet. The fee which is established by, in the city code, I believe it's section one dash three oh two, which just references a fee schedule that the commission adopts by ordinance. That fee is fifteen hundred dollars for them to connect. And then it follows, it talks about the construction, what it has to be and all that stuff. This is really just a tap connecting it. It's not like he's laying in a whole new sewer line that would impact ours. So. And then on the back, you have the routing and approvals. None of those are signed yet because I got done with Mr. Height about three o'clock this afternoon. But talking with city staff, Brad is here, him and Joe talk with uh, public utilities who oversees that. And this morning we talked with Kerry, Community Development Director and Travis, the city inspector, and they all have no issues with it. So. Normally I know the city commission would like to have the information ahead of, ahead of time so they can think about it, talk to the constituents. Uh, but because, and I take full responsibility of the timing and the work that Mr. Height has done and getting verbal approval from the city that, yeah, this is okay. I would ask you to consider approving his application to connect to the city sewer system. If this was something like the Red Bud Trailer Park that had, you know, multiple connections, that would take more time and study, but this is one residence that is connecting you know, I think ten, twenty feet to the neighbor's yard to tap into an existing system that's there.
So to simplify it, they went through all the proper channels, got proper approval, just noticed that it specifically states in code that we have to approve it.
Yes. Which, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, my, my question along that is, is Abilene unique in that? Of having the governing body approve extraterritorial sewer connections or, or is that administratively approved in other areas?
Normally it's administratively approved, but I have seen communities that will restrict, whether it's water or sewer connections outside the city limit. For various reasons, they will either restrict that to no, we're not going to do it. Or two, yes, we'll do it after you properly and are self annexed into the city limits. More of those reasons, and I can use that, the Red Bud Trailer Court, it's about two and a half miles from the city. They paid for all of that, but the water lines, if they hadn't, or it was a water line, even if you have forty customers at the end of it, especially with the fees that we have now for water and sewer rates, you're not going to recover those costs just from the user charges. A, a better example would be back where I live, there's a five mile water line that serves customers outside the city limits. And there's maybe ten and a whole length of it. Well, that line needs to be replaced at the cost of a few million dollars. But we don't collect that in revenue in fifty years from those five customers. That's one reason. And another reason is drought. Now, I do know that your comprehensive development plan, one of the recommendations, and I'm not sure, have to refer to Aaron again, was that prior, the recommendation in that was prior to approving new sewer taps or water taps outside the city limits, that they would have to waive. I'm not sure the right term, but basically if the city decided to annex their property in the future, that they would not dispute that. Not sure if that's, yeah, that's just in the comprehensive plan is something that when that was developed, I was talking about. So it's on people's radars, prior governing bodies and the public and that development of the comprehensive plan that about annexing or requiring them in the future not to dispute it before you connect it. But to answer your question, like the mayor said, simply answer it, yes, it's unusual from my experience.
Do we have any further questions or questions for city staff or discussion amongst the commission on that item? Um, I'll give my thoughts on it. Like I alluded to earlier, they went through the, through the process. And likely, if you wouldn't have looked up that specific code, it would have never been brought to our attention. So for me, as long as they are following the requirements and guidelines that they've already gone over and it's not like we're, you know, they've got that hookup, what did you say, twenty, twenty-five feet?
Yeah, I'm not.
You know, it's not like we're talking about running a five, five mile line.
Water customers for the city.
Right.
What kind of a motion would you like?
Uh, just a motion to approve the application, a second, and then an affirmative vote from the majority is all we need.
All right, I'll make that motion to approve this sanitary sewer tap application and permit.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote. Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff.
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries.
I do want to point out that we are working on an application and a step-by-step procedure for all of those taps. So there's no ambiguity and everybody knows what has to happen in the final.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under heading nine reports, we have nine A, water line replacement project, Public Works Director Anderson.
Commissioners, this is just an update of the new water line that was put in place at the wastewater treatment plant. The actual line installation was completed on Friday, October third. And just a few minor little things to wrap up when it comes to a little bit of leveling and reseating in a slight little area of concrete, work to do on a back pad. Really no, not tied to a building specifically, out in front of a old existing building and we're just repairing it back in as like it was. So everything went just fine, did find lots of brittle pipe. So overall, it's a very good thing that we did this and hopefully the headaches will go away. Appreciate letting you, letting us have this project in place because it was a definite headache last year with the number of break that we had throughout the summer and winter, and this should definitely take care of all them. But this was just an update for you to wrap.
And that was a project completed by a local contractor?
Yep. This was Denny's. It was a combination bid. I'm not sure how it was all put together, but Denny's, I mean, did a majority of the work and the excavation was done by Boyd's.
Thank you. Next item is ten A, consider a motion to recess.
Good with moving right into the study session? I'll make that motion to recess this regular meeting and move right into our study session.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote. Commissioner Koloff.
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We are in recess.
That's, yeah, I heard you say that. That's.
I will now call to order the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Study Session. Our first item is two A, review proposals for water utility cost of service.
Staffs send out request proposals to qualified firms for a cost of service study and rate structure. The scope of services which we asked for was to review the city's current rates, revenues and expenditures to functionalize the cost allocation across customer classes. Currently you just have residential and commercial, then inside and outside. Then do a comprehensive cost of service analysis, develop a rate design with alternatives, a flat like you have now for residential, commercial has a tiered, but it doesn't kick up until two hundred and twenty-five thousand. A volume metric or tiered and for them to deliver a report to the city commission recommending which one would best serve the city. I did have some questions that what's the difference between a cost of service study and revenue requirements? And at your seat on the die is a memorandum that describes the two, but to put it pretty simply, a revenue requirements just looks at the revenue required to cover the utilities expenditures. Simple as that, the key question that that answers is what's the total amount of revenue the utility needs to operate? Now, a cost of service study, what that does is in addition to how much revenue you need, who should pay what share of the total cost to ensure that it's fair and equitable across customer classes? Without a cost of service study being done every several years, what you do is you'll find that unintentionally some of the customer classes are subsidizing others, which is the case with the rural water district and our other two classes. That cost recovery is based on actual usage, system demand. It provides transparency in how the rates are developed and justified. It's defensible under professional and regulatory standards as the methods are lined off on by the American Waterworks Association, the government finance officers operation, then also the EPA recommends a cost of service study every number of years. But it also provides long-term sustainability by aligning the rates with the actual service cost, the capital needs and the restructure, infrastructure reinvestment. So on the back of your, the memoir I provided to you, it just, it's a comparison of the two, a quick reference in case you have any questions. We did receive two proposals back, one is from eighteen ninety-eight and company, which is part of Burns and McDonald, which is a large national engineering firm and then Raftellus. The Burns and McDonald presents a structured five-step approach, emphasizes long-term planning, then then clean water act affordability compliance. It included additional services beyond what we asked for, such as debt, debt issuance support, bond feasibility and engineering expertise. They do have strong regional utility experience and they're supported by a large engineering, finance and technical staff. Raftellus, they focus directly on financial actual planning, cost of service and rate design tailored specifically to Abilene, which is exactly what we asked for. They place a strong emphasis on stakeholder communication and rate adoption. And what is unique is that at the end of this, they will provide the city with a user-friendly financial rate model, an Excel spreadsheet that is ours to use and keep in the future. They have a Kansas experience with Junction City, Agerton, Lawrence and the city of Wichita. They also have national expertise. And importantly, they commit to meeting the December fifteenth timeline that we put in the RFP, whereas eighteen ninety-eight, their timeframe, I believe, was the end of February or beginning of March. So based on that, our recommendation is to go with Raftellus. Their cost is thirty thousand dollars for the cost of service study. In comparison, eighteen ninety-eight's cost was forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. So also what you have in front of you is a copy of the professional services agreement with Raftellus. Aaron has taken a look at it, has no issues with the agreement as the form. But we will come back to the city commission in two weeks asking for approval of the professional services agreement, which will allow Raftellus to get started and hopefully have something in place by January or February. You'll get the information in December, but by the time we talk about it and you pick what you want, it'll be January or February.
Do you? Do you have any December fifteenth timeline? I guess you have any concerns that we won't get as much or as detailed information from them by meeting that deadline versus you know, kind of biting the bullet and dragging it out a little longer? Do you have any concerns that in that regard?
And they say that they, they can, a lot of that will be dependent on us dividing the data that they request. Last month I sent out to the appropriate city staff, the information that cost of service study would need, so they started compiling that already. But once that's approved by the city commission, we'll get that to them. However, if Raftellus says, hey, we're having some issues because of A, B or C, or we're unable to get them the data in the format that they need and it's going to extend beyond December fifteenth, we would definitely come back to the city commission and say, hey, we're not going to meet this December fifteenth deadline because of A, B and C. The agreement doesn't require that it has to be done, that was just our goal to get it done by then.
Right. Where was I going with that? I don't know.
I, I have a quick question. Is this just maybe a dumb question, but is this exclusive to the water side and not sewer? So this is just, just a rate study on the water, water side of our utility.
Well, it's a full cost of service, a rate study would be.
Oh, yeah, yeah. To use.
And I think the important part also looking forward is it's defensible. The framework or the methodology they use is accepted by those professional organizations. So in future negotiations on water rates with the rural water district, we have something that is defensible. The methodology is accepted by those professional organizations and groups. But it'd be hard to say, well, it really doesn't cost you five seventy-four per thousand, whatever they come up with.
Thanks for jogging my memory there, two questions, what is the funding mechanism for the thirty thousand dollar fee? And would it be your goal to get this, to get new rates implemented for January one, when we update all of our other rates?
A funding mechanism will be the operating fund from the water utility. And the, it's unlikely that we'll have those rates to you because the idea will be to come back and say, here is a flat rate like you have now. Here's what a tiered rate looks like and discuss those options because those can impact customers differently. You have a flat rate, I know the common question is what about the widow who's on, you know, fixed income? A flat rate may be a little bit higher than a tiered rate where if you use five thousand, it jumps up. So if we get it back by December fifteenth, I wouldn't see the city attorney having enough information until the first meeting in January to start talking about preparing an ordinance. So if.
Yeah, and I, I think in the packet it stated February or March one for that, if we adjusted anything, it would go into effect in February or March.
Yeah, because you'll want to also have time with large, depending on what that study shows, you have some large customers out there such as I forget their name.
Russell Stover.
Russell Stovers, and depending on what that says, we'd want to have conversations with them on what those what that study says, and if their rates are going to change, why they're going to change, rather than just saying, here's your new rate. Is there a very large user of water?
Yeah, and it states rates effective February twenty twenty-six in the packet, but that's assuming that we consider and approve any adjustments by December twenty-ninth.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, is there a publication requirement like for that?
We've codified the water rates in the city code, so it was.
It would simply be a matter of amending those relevant code provisions via an ordinance and that ordinance could be effective as early as we are able to publish a summary on either the city's website or the newspaper. So it wouldn't take a whole lot of time, once we know what those rates are.
In the structure.
Yep.
And the question about the funding source, one of the things we start doing is we're looking at the budget regularly and forecasting, okay, what's it looking like? We did that today with the the water utility and the revenue for the water utilities budgeted around two million dollars, we're tracking to be about one point nine in revenue, about a five percent deficit from what was budgeted. Though there'll have to be some additional reductions or cost savings made in that to cover that. Well, just to end in the black, but we'll make it happen.
Do we have any further questions on this item? Do you need any further direction from us?
No, I just, I forgot one thing, one thing that, so you're not in January or February, like he never said that. One thing that they may recommend is adding a customer class of an industrial. Most places will have rural, commercial and industrial. And you can define industrial however you want. Or you can call it a large water user, they use so much per month. Well, some places have a special rate for those. So down the road, if you, once the industrial product is developed and you do have somebody coming in, not that you want a large water user, but you'll have that rate structure. They'll look at your rates and say, there's not even a structure. That's some of the conversation, why it might not happen by the way in December.
Many further questions, discussion on that item?
I guess I'd just like to think about that industrial user and how that, how we would look at that industrial user differently than the rural water district or, or someone like that.
Generally, it's for industrial manufacturing customers, I'm assuming that if you have a tenant that'll come into those, that industrial parker want to go there, what their water usage is and what their wastewater looks like will be important to the city. For example, I'm not sure that you would be able to sustain a, an ethanol plant, just for example, because of the amount of water they use, or if you have an electroplating facility that wants to come in, the strength of that wastewater is pretty significant. So where I'm going with that is you classify me, there is a industrial customer, so they have to meet the N A I C S code of industrial customer. Or you just call them large water users. Anybody that say uses more than two hundred thousand gallons a day is a large water.
I guess just you said, looking at how those rates might affect our large customers, our largest customer is the rural water district.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
And, and they're probably going to be unique unless the other rural water districts want to start buying water from us as well. So I think that that's something that they understand, obviously they're going to have an understanding of it pretty quickly. Just, I, I just want to make sure we're not.
Well, they're under city code, so they're not an actual customer class, they're a contract customer. But there's a specific provision in city code that talks about contract customers. So the rates that are in city code for residential and commercial don't apply to them because they have a specific rate structure outlined in that forty-year agreement, which was, has been amended twice. So you have twelve years left on the agreement with them. Should you change the rates, that would have to be through an amendment to the agreement. And I'm not sure of the, the steps necessary for that to happen, but at some point, the policy decision is this is what it costs to produce the water, what should we charge them and then how that's negotiated going forward and what if they just let's say no, and what are, what are the cities opt? Because absent them paying at least what it costs for us to produce it, the residential and commercial customers will subsidize them for another twelve years. But that'll be addressed in the, in the cost of service study and you'll have information to put their water use and their price in context to what it costs the utility.
I'm just kind of trying to get my mind around the economics of water production. And obviously the first gallon is the most expensive one to make, right? Building the plant and having all the infrastructure in place, you know, when you're doing your millionth gallon a month, that last one's fairly inexpensive, so I'm curious to see what we get from our consultants, I guess.
Yeah, because a lot of the climate use, you know, demand, when they're demanding it, yeah. And they'll do a good job of explaining to you why each class should be that way.
Have you worked with them previously?
No. But I have talked to the people, some of the folks on their list and they have no issues.
Any other questions, discussion? Excuse me, move to item two B, review of phone service agreement interim city manager Quin day.
I put that on the agenda in the hopes of having a, a new agreement back from them, they've been working with the city attorney. The first agreement that they set back, we didn't like, so Aaron's been working with them going back and forth and they've been pretty easy to work with, some of the significant things that we said, no, we just can't live with, they changed, there's a few more minor touches. So we'll bring that back to you in a couple of weeks or next month. But as part of our review of all those service agreements, this phone company has agreed and I'm just talking in like rounded numbers, our prior phone service bill is around twenty-three or twenty-four hundred dollars a month. And we'll have that down to about twelve hundred dollars, almost a fifty percent reduction. It'll cost us four thousand dollars upfront for the equipment. But if you think about that, we'll pay that back in four months and then after that, you're saving at least a thousand dollars a month on phone service with no changes. We'll bring that back once they get that back, I just hope they happen back by then. Wishful thinking.
Any question, or further questions on that item? Not really an item. Okay. Saying none, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded, do we have any commission discussion? Saying none, I'm going to roll call vote, Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Whit.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Hi.
Myself, yes, motion carries, we are adjourned.